Good evening, I would now like to call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, October the 14th, 2019. We'll begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance. Prayer will be led by Pastor Tim Lindsay.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are so thankful for the privilege of being here this evening. I thank you, Lord, for our councilors. I thank you for the several other of our public servants and their staffs. And, Lord, we're so grateful for the men and women who are willing to give their lives to this great city. I thank you for the citizens who are here that are so passionate about their city. So, thank you that we can do the city's business. We do pray that your hand would be upon the meeting, Lord. We want to do everything to your honor and glory. Think of the personal lives that are here, the things that have to be set aside so that we can perform the function this evening. So, I pray for them. I pray for their families, their loved ones. And I pray, Lord, that everything that happens this evening will honor and glorify your Son. In his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir. Councilors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. There are 24 councilors present. Counselor Scales has asked to be excused for the evening because of sickness. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. With us tonight, I would like to introduce to you our newest Marion County elected official,
Thank you. Still new here. Well, she's not here, but I know she's watching on TV. I want to wish my lovely bride happy anniversary. I'm down here at the council having fun.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to welcome our Pike Township trustee, Annette Johnson, to the chamber.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the not-as-new president and CEO of the Arts Council of Indianapolis, Ms. Julie Goodman.
Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome my Asmi brothers and sisters, Michael Torres and Georgia Cravy, who are here, and any other Asmi members who are here, if you could stand.
Counselor Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Sheriff Farstar and his staff. Please, thank you.
Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize anybody from the Indianapolis Fire Department, 416 Local Union, if you stand up, and all our first responders, please. Thank you for being here today. Oh, that's our Chief Malone. I'll shout you out, Chief Malone. Thank you.
All right, very good. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, October 14th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the State of Indiana, a call to be published in the court and commercial record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, September 27th, 2019, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 368 and 375, 2019, said hearing to be held on Monday, October 14th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the State of Indiana, a call to be published in the court and commercial record and in the Indianapolis Star on Monday, October 7th, 2019, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number 379, 2019, said hearing to be held on Monday, October 21st, 2019, at 5:30 PM in Room 260 of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances. General Ordinance Numbers 56 through 63, Special Ordinance Number 11, General Resolution 27. Joseph H. Hoxatt, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
And the next item on our agenda is approval of the journals for September the 23rd, 2019. Do I have consent?
Consent.
The next item on our agenda is presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And tonight, we do not have any. And so, the next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 376, 2019, introduced by Counselor Robinson, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, determines the need for the Marion County Coroner's Office to renew the lease on their property located at 521 West McCarthy Street. Proposal Numbers 377 through 379 and 390 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal Number 377, introduced by Counselors Shreve, Adamson, and Lewis, authorizes the Metropolitan Development Commission and the Department of Metropolitan Development to execute required documents to implement the application and issue debt obligations in the form of promissory notes from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in an amount not to exceed $5 million to be used for infrastructure improvements to facilitate redevelopment that may include improved drainage, new sidewalks, new bike and pedestrian infrastructure, and new lighting that will support commercial and residential development in the South Meridian Allocation Area, and approves any appropriations necessary for the repayment of principal and interest incurred by the issuance of such promissory notes. Proposal Number 378, introduced by Counselor Holliday, approves the statement of benefits of Craftmark Bakery LLC and GPT Exploration Drive Owner LLC, an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic development -- I'm sorry, revitalization area. Proposal Number 379, introduced by Counselors Johnson and Adamson, amend the declaratory resolution and redevelopment plan for the Near East Side redevelopment area to add an area referred to as the Sherman Park Allocation Area within the Near East Side Redevelopment Area and to adopt a supplement to the plan. Proposal Number 390, introduced by Counselor Osley, nominates Frank Esposito to the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders, priority business. Proposal Numbers 380 through 389 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no counselor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is special orders, public hearing. Proposal Number 368, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 368, 2019, approves an additional appropriations totaling $2,300,000 in the 2019 budget of the Indianapolis Fire Department, federal grant funds to support Indiana Task Force One's National Urban Search and Rescue Response Cooperative Agreement, covering compensation for personnel participating, agencies for salaries and travel expenses incurred during the deployment in response to hurricanes Barry and Dorian. Candace Harris, the grant manager of the Indiana Task Force One, stated that there are $2.3 million that will be reimbursed in the Federal National Urban Search and Rescue Response Cooperative Agreement. These funds will be used to pay for contractual obligations, pay for salaries and travel expenses. She said the $400,000 is in character one, and 1.9 is in character three. Counselor Simpson moved, seconded by Counselor Westler, sent proposal 368 to the full council. Would they do pass recommendation? Motion carried by vote of 11 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal Number 368? Very good. Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal Number 375, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 375 was heard in Admin and Finance Committee. Proposal -- propose a ordinance of the Marion County Local Income Tax Council to, number one, modify the local income rate -- tax rate; two, to modify the allocation of the previous imposed expenditure rate; and three, determine how the revenue from the property tax relief rate shall be applied to provide property tax credit in subsequent years, and to cast the vote of the City County Council on such resolution. It passed out of committee eight to zero. I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal 375? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to zero. We'll now proceed to special orders, unfinished business. There is no business under special orders, unfinished business, so we'll now proceed to special orders, final adoption. And this next item on our agenda is proposal Number 312, refer to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proposal Number 312, met on October 3rd, in attendance with myself, Counselor Cardy, Fanny Gray, Mascara McHenry, and Simpson. Mr. Chairman, that motion passed by a vote of 5 to 2, which approved the operating agreement of Coffin Eagle Creek and Riverside Golf Academy and R. N. Thompson Golf. By the vote of 5 to 2, Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 22 to two. The next item on our agenda is proposal Number 313, refer to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Mr. Chairman, I so -- proposal Number 313, approve the operating agreement of Smot Golf Course by the Capital City Golf Management by a vote of 5 to 2. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 21 to three. The next item on our agenda is proposal Number 324, refer to Administration and Finance, Metropolitan Economic Development, Parks and Recreation, Public Safety and Criminal Justice, and Public Works Committees. Proposal Number 324, 2019, adopts the annual budget for the City of Indianapolis and Marion County for 2020. The public hearing for this proposal was held on September the 23rd, 2019, and we will now receive reports from the chairs regarding the various committees' recommendations, beginning with Counselor Simpson with the Admin and Finance Committee report, and following in the order listed under committee actions on the agenda, ending with Counselor Adamson's report from the Public Works Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Summary of what took place in the committee was Counselor Shreve moved to divide the question on proposal 324 to separate out appropriation for the City County Council budget. The motion was seconded and passed with a vote of 8 to 1. The motion was made and seconded to pass the City County Council portion of the three -- proposal 324 to the full council, would a due pass recommendation? The motion passed 7 to 2. The motion was made and seconded to pass Number 324 for the remaining of the Administration and Finance portion of the full council, would a due pass recommendation? The motion passed unanimously. Mr. President, it is my recommendation to adopt the Admin and Finance portion of the proposal 324, 2019.
Thank you. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Department of the Business and Neighborhood Services, the Department of Metropolitan Development, the Assessor's Office, the Recorder's Office, and the Surveyor's Office were present to answer questions regarding the 2020 budget. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proposal Number 344, we adopt the annual budget of the City of Indianapolis by a vote of 7 to 0. Mr. Chairman, we also move.
Chairman, thank you. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on October the 2nd for the review and analysis. Counselor Robinson moved to divide the question on proposal 324 to separate the crime prevention portion. The motion was seconded and passed unanimously. The motion was made and seconded to pass the crime prevention portion of the proposal to the full council. They do pass recommendation. The motion passed with a vote of 10 to zero with one abstention. The motion was also made and seconded to pass proposal 324 for the remainder of the Public Safety and Criminal Justice budget to the full council. They do pass recommendation. And that motion passed unanimously. Mr. President, I move the recommendation by the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 324 adopts the annual budget for the City of Indianapolis and Marion County for 2020, the Department of Public Works portion only. Counselor Shreve asked if the second shift for DPW would have 15 employees the next year. Director Parker confirmed. Counselor Shreve then asked how many employees would be added. Mr. Parker stated that the goal of the second shift is to have 10 fully-staffed union crews. He stated that this budget will fund two of those crews plus supervisory positions. Counselor Coulter moved, seconded by Counselor Osley, to send proposal Number 324, 2019, to the full council, with a due pass recommendation. That motion carried by a vote of 10 to 1, with Counselor Scales casting a lone negative -- negative vote, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. In order to permit some councilors with professional interests in proportions of proposal 324 to abstain on those portions, I move to divide the question on the adoption of that proposal as follows. Question one, appropriations for crime prevention grants set forth in Section 4.01D, a proposal Number 324, 2019. And question two, the balance of proposal Number 324, 2019. Mr. President, I so move.
Because there's no debate, on a question to divide, we will go straight to the board for our vote.
Mr. President, any permission to abstain?
Thank you. Yes, so are we just dividing the question here?
I apologize, Mr. President.
The motion to divide carries 24 to zero, so we will now consider question one, which is for the appropriations for crime prevention grants set forth in Section 4.01D, a proposal Number 324, 2019. Are there any comments from councilors on question one, a proposal 324, 2019? Yes.
None, or lack permission to abstain.
Counselor Lewis. Thank you. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to abstain.
Are there any additional comments? Then we'll go to the board for our vote. Please bear in mind that we're voting only on the crime prevention grants in Section Question one is adopted by a vote of 21, yays and three abstentions. We'll now consider question two, which is the balance of proposal Number 324, 2019. Are there any comments from councilors on question number two? Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, just to clarify for the body, question number two is the passage of the entire city budget, excepting municipal corporations and the piece we just pulled out, correct?
That's correct.
With that in mind, I would like to make a comment, Mr. President.
Please.
Thank you. A year ago, I joined all the councilors of this body in unanimous support of the 2019 city budget. And in the very first council meeting of 2019, the council was greeted with $33 million in unfunded mandates. That's $33 million that was not a part of the 2019 budget. By the end of this year, or actually by just a month ago, another $24 million in non-budgeted mandates were received by this body. An example would be nearly $1 million for shiny new vehicles for a city agency. And I believe it's hard to think that the administration did not anticipate that need when planning for the budget. So, for these reasons, plus my concerns about what items are not included in tonight's honestly balanced budget, that I will be voting no on the 2020 budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any additional comments from councilors? Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take the time as well to kind of echo Counselor McQuillan's comments. You know, this -- the fact that we were asked for $57 million more dollars this past year for things that could have been forecasted leaves me uneasy with this budget being honestly and truly balanced. I encourage the, you know, city to work with the departments and forecast things like vehicles. I mean, a fleet should be forecastable to know when that's going to be aged and when it needs to be replaced. I'm glad we got it done, but it needs to be on paper during the budget because that is foreseeable, and I'm -- I just have a very hesitant -- I'm very hesitant to believe this is a truly honest budget when we've had a year like we've had. Thank you.
Very good. Are there any additional comments from councilors? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to remind my colleagues that over the last four years, this is our fifth time getting a credit upgrade. This is a third balanced budget, and there are no tax increases in this budget, so I do encourage all of my colleagues to support this budget. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any additional comments from councilors? Counselor Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to commend all of my fellow councilors on the budget process this year and highlight a few things that I'm excited about in the current budget in terms of supporting it. I'm mostly excited about DMD's addition in character one to focus specific capital toward transit planning and homelessness. I think that could be truly transformational. I'm very excited and relieved that our tireless Parks Department has figured out a way to move golf into a revenue-producing position for the city for the first time in my lifetime, I believe. And there are many other things about this budget that I'm excited to support, but mostly those were kind of the things that stuck out at me. Of course, public safety being the lion's share of our city's funding. There's a lot of things they're doing there. I won't go through highlighting that, but I feel really good about the direction of IFD with our new training facility, and IMPD is moving toward some big steps that we need to do in terms of personnel addition. So, I just wanted to encourage my colleagues to support this and explain my vote. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment and thank everybody that had a small part to play in crafting this proposal this year, from the public who may have spoke up on this, to every agency head and everyone else in between. I am certainly, with this being my first budget process that I've gone through, I'm very proud to be a part of this, and I ask both sides of the aisle, but particularly my -- the colleagues in my caucus to remember that when it comes to this, this is no time for politics, that this budget is something that affects every single citizen in Indianapolis and Marion County, and we need to keep our eye on the ball here. Thank you.
Very good. Any additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board for our vote on the balance proposal Number The motion carries 22 to two. The next item on our agenda, Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. A moment to explain my vote. Despite my no vote on the budget as a whole, I would like to point out the good things that many others have echoed tonight that are included in the 2020 budget. First of all, I'd like to applaud all councilors of both parties who worked hard to see modest pay increases for our IMPD and other public safety officials, something that was desperately needed, as well as the continued efforts to repair our aging roads and infrastructure. And I will admit, this being my 11th budget, while one never sees everything they would like in a budget, I am glad to see that we will be moving any forward. However, I and others will be watching the numbers very carefully. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to again echo some of Counselor McQuillan's statements there. I really would like to applaud Public Safety Committee as well for getting the pay raises for IMPD out there. I think it's long overdue, and it's well-deserved. And also, would like to thank our DPW as well for getting money allocated towards our roads and infrastructure, which is so desperately needed. And again, you know, I get -- this is something I think where the public safety portion of it and some of the DPW I can agree with, but again, you know, I do appreciate everybody's input and everybody's time and thought that went into this year's budget. Thank you.
All right, very good. The next item on our agenda is proposal Number 333, refer to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 333, 2019, adopts the operating and maintenance budget of tax levies of the Indianapolis Airport and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for 2020. The proposal passed out of committee by vote of 7 to 0. Mr. President, I ask for consent to hear proposal 334 through 337, 2019, together. Proposal Number 334 adopts the operation and maintenance budget and tax levy of the Capital Improvement Board of Managers and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporations. Proposal 335 adopts the operation and maintenance budget and tax levies of the Health and Hospital Corporation and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporations. Proposal Number 337 adopts the operation and maintenance budget and tax levy of the Indianapolis Marion County Library and establishes appropriation for said municipal corporations. All of these passed out of committee with a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. President, proposal Number 336 adopts the operating and maintenance budget and tax levies of the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation, better known as Indigo, and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for 2020. This proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 62, of Counselor Maury and Westler casting a negative vote. Mr. President, I so move.
Chairman, I wanted to make sure that the proposals that you had asked to lump together include proposal Number 333?
Pardon me?
Does that include 333?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, motion's been moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Are there comments from counselors? Counsel Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need permission to abstain from proposal number three-thirty-five.
Thank you, Chairman Lewis. I understand that we will need actually, Chairman Gray, to vote independently on each one of them.
Okay.
Because they are separate budgets, budgets.
Proposal.
So if we could, we'll start with proposal number three-thirty-three.
Proposal number three-thirty-three passed out of committee and out of committee by a vote of seven to zero, and I so.
It's moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors on proposal number three-thirty-three? Counsel McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Slightly related to this proposal, I would like to point out that once again Indianapolis has been voted as having the number-one most incredible bestest airport in the entire world, and I'd like to thank them and congratulate them again for that award. Thank you, and I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. Any additional comments on proposal number three-thirty-three? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. Chairman Gray, proposal three-thirty-four.
Can we do this all at once, the next three?
Chairman Gray, I will ask that you ask for consent to lump them together.
I didn't hear the question.
Chairman, we will go through these one at a time?
Okay.
All right, proposal number three-thirty-four.
Proposal number three-thirty-four two thousand and nineteen adopts the operation and maintenance budget and tax levy of the Capital Improvement Board and appropriations for said municipal corporation. It passed out of committee, eight to zero, and I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three-thirty-five. Chairman Gray.
Proposal number three-thirty-five adopts the operation and maintenance budget and tax levies of the Health and Hospital Corporation and established corporations for said municipal corporation, passed out of committee by a vote of eight to zero, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three yeas. And one abstention. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three-three-six, refer to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray.
Three-three-six adopts an operation and maintenance budget and tax levies of the Indianapolis Public Library, Public Transportation Corporation, better known as Indigo, and establishes appropriation for said municipal corporation. This proposal passed out of committee by a vote of six to two, with Counsel Maori and Westler casting the negative vote. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counsel Maori.
Thank you, Mr. President. During this committee meeting, I, I mean, I was pretty straightforward with anyone that came before us in asking, are you confident in this budget that you won't have to come back for any more asks? So one of the reasons I am going to be a no vote on this again tonight is because I have yet to get the affirmation that I need that Indigo will not be able to, will not have to come back to us for any more additional funding. They were unsure of it when we, when I asked it at the committee meeting, and I still have yet to hear from, to get a definite answer since, so given that, I would, I just wanted to kind of explain my vote. Thank you.
Very good. Are there any additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty to four. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three-three-seven.
Proposal number three-three-seven adopts the operating and maintenance budget and tax levies of the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library and establishes appropriation for said municipal corporation. This proposal passed out of committee by a vote of eight to zero, and I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. We will now convene the Police Special Service District Council to consider proposal number three-two-one two thousand and nineteen approving the tax levy and rate for the Police Special Service District for two thousand and twenty. Refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal three-two-one approves the tax levy and rate for the Police Special Service District two thousand and twenty. The proposal passed by a vote of eleven to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is Fire Special Service District Council to consider proposal number three-two-two two thousand and nineteen approving the tax levy and rate for the Fire Special Service District for two thousand and twenty. Refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal three-twenty-two two thousand and nineteen approves the tax levy and rate for the Fire Special Service District for two thousand and twenty. Proposal passed by a vote of eleven to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries twenty-four to zero. We'll now convene the Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Council to consider proposal number three-twenty-three two thousand and nineteen approving the tax levy and rate for the Solid Waste Collection Special Service District for two thousand and twenty. Refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three-twenty-three two thousand and nineteen approves the tax levy and the rate for the Solid Waste Collection Special Service District for two thousand and twenty. The proposal passed out of committee with a vote of eleven to zero, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. We'll now reconvene the City-County Council. In order to ensure that the budget proposals are executed properly, Counselor Adamson has a technical motion with regard to the budget proposals. Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Because of the complexity and the interrelated calculations of the budget proposals and amendments just adopted, I move that the General Counsel and the Chief Financial Officer are authorized with the concurrence of the Office of Finance and Management to correct any technical or computational errors in the budget ordinances and resolutions as necessary to accurately reflect the actions of this council. I so move.
We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that motion carries. The next item on our agenda is new business. As there is no business under new business, I want to thank you counselors, committee chairs, department heads, and CFOs, Office of Finance and Management, and council staff for all of your hard work during the budget process. And if I may, I would like to read a statement this evening. I would like for us to reflect on the work of our council Chief Financial Officer, Bart Brown. As all of you are aware by now, this evening's full council meeting is the last one that Mr. Brown will attend as our CFO. This council and all residents of Marion County owe a debt of gratitude for the many hours of service that CFO Brown has served in his role. And whether it be staffing long committee meeting, long committee meetings multiple nights a week, or responding to calls, emails, or texts at all hours on any day of the week, Mr. Brown has been a constant presence in the work of this body for the past several years. And anyone who's had the privilege of serving in this body has relied on his counsel at one time or another. Beyond his work ethic, Bart's deep knowledge of the city's budget, the various public financing mechanisms afforded our city, and his overall understanding of the policymaking process have made his services invaluable, as all of our tenures here in the council. Bart's diligence on behalf of taxpayers has transcended multiple administrations, and I find it telling that in today's heightened political environment, my colleagues in both caucuses have acknowledged to me how much of an asset he has been to this body. So Bart, I, I know that I am joined by every other member of the council here this evening in thanking you for your service. And though we regret losing your expertise and friendship, we are certain that good things lie ahead for you, and we wish you good luck in your future endeavors. So I ask my colleagues to join me in thanking our Chief Financial Officer, Bart Brown, for his many years of dedicated service to the city of Indianapolis. Bart, if you would like to say a few words, I would ask my colleagues to indulge you.
Well, first of all, I want to thank each and every one of you. It's been a pleasure. Twenty-five bosses, not many people can, first of all, brag that, and second of all, say they survive that. But it's been, it's been wonderful. I, I've worked with so many great people. I'm just one person that is dedicated to the job, but loves the job. But I'm not going far, so, and you all have my cell phone number, and I encourage you to call me for the next couple of months anyway, if you have any questions. But I'll be back around because, you know me, I like to ask for money. But thank you very much.
So the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The docketed agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Counsel McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By Counsel Holiday in memory of Ray L. Stanfield. By Counselors Osley and Mascarri in memory of Tiara Cox. By Counsel Osley in memory of Bernard McFadden. By Counsel Lewis in memory of Robert Gibson. By Counselors Lewis and Osley in memory of Marilyn Shirley Morton Corbett. By Counselor McQuillan in memory of the Honorable Thomas Joseph Carroll, Tigger McHenry, Darrell Clyde Coron, and Janet Cumming Keeler. By Counsel Maori in memory of Beverly Brown. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City-County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask to support of fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body and that a letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counsel McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received and the requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned.